Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the May 7th, 2012 Morgantons City Council meeting. At this time, I'd like to thank everybody, of course, for being here, but also Sheldon Stevenson, would you lead us with our invocation?
As you probably know, I come here because I care about Morganton. My wife and I were just grateful that somehow God directed us to retire here and be part of this community. It has a definite image and beauty and wonder that we are certainly grateful for. Usually, when I come, I try to have maybe some different point to share with you in a second or two. I want to put before you, suppose God gives each one of us, as he gives us his life, gives us our lives, has a special purpose for us. And suppose God's purpose for you is to carry out being the city council. Suppose that's God's purpose for you. And as I think about that, I think about what a need for trust in that, what a need for trust in the fact that God has great things in mind for us. Maybe we try to envision maybe the infinite possibilities, you know, using God's wisdom, God's directions, God's spiritual strength, God's love, helping God to make it even more wonderful, even more beautiful, even more lovely than it is right now. And it's your city, our city. You remember reading this in the Bible, God saying to us these things, and I would use that, this for the prayer. God says to us, "I am the vine; you are the branches. I want you to bear fruit for me. Without me, you can do nothing."
Thank you, Steve. Introduction of our city council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman, city councilman Forrest Fleming, our city attorney, Louie Vina, I'm Al Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city manager, Sidney Simmons, city councilman, John Cantrell, city councilman, Kelly Russell, recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley interpreting for our deaf community. Under public advocacy issues and strategies, I've got a couple of things I want to say. But first, I hope everybody saw the nice article about our mayor pro tem in today's newspaper, and I want to congratulate you, doctor, on receiving, you're the fourth generation doctor in the Hamer family and from the University of North Carolina. A few weeks ago, they gave you the distinguished alumni award, and it's a great honor for us to sit with you, for one thing. Anyone that can deliver from around eight to 10,000 babies, not many people can do that. And we greatly appreciate an individual that has been on every board in Burke County, the school board, the county commission, and been on the city council for 30 years. And that's an amazing record that will be hard for anybody to equal. Again, I want to congratulate you, and I want everybody to stand up and let's give them a standing ovation. Thank you, doctor, for allowing us to sit with you. Cheers.
Thank you.
Also, I think a superb night, Friday night in the city of Morganton. It was a sight to behold. Went to the city of Morganton Municipal Auditorium for a fantastic program on the imitators of the Eagles, but it was actually, they sounded, as Bill Wilson said, they sounded as good as the Eagles. And then it was almost a standing room crowd only at Kama. And you look across the street at the old Morganton High School property and people at Art and Chocolate event across the street, parking and going into the Armory, and then going to the downtown right after the concert at Kama. And I have never seen a crowd as big for a Friday night concert since we've had them, but I understand they have been that way before, and I probably maybe missed it. But it was standing room only, and actually, I'm talking about downtown. The downtown restaurants were full, and everybody enjoyed a tremendous night in our community. And a couple of people that were from out of town said they just couldn't believe the kind of reaction they have to a downtown free concert. We do so much for our citizens that I guess they take you for granted, and if it weren't here, then they would notice it. But again, I want to thank all those that were, that put on the events with Bill Wilson with Kama, and the Options did the Art and Chocolate event over at the old Armory. Community House, by the way, Community House had almost a full house of people eating and going there. That's the fourth event that was going on in downtown Morganton. So parking places were at a premium. You've got the Main Street Department, and of course, the Community House staff that... So we had a lot of city people doing their work and doing their thing, public safety out in full force. Again, I want to thank everybody because it was a good night and no problems in downtown Morganton. Farmer's Market was Saturday, and will continue to be Wednesdays and Saturdays. Wednesday from 2:00 to 6:00 uptown on the corner of Avery Avenue and North Green. And then, of course, the Farmer's Market on Saturday is down at the Depot. Anything from the municipal power agency, or you've got anything else?
I have one thing about the power agency. On May the 31st, in the evening at the Community House, electricities will be hosting a regional meeting here for the electricities in our region to come and get an update from their staff about what's going on.
Okay. Minister Power Agency?
Well, that was it.
That was it. Okay, I'm sorry. Consent agenda, Sally.
The consent agenda before you tonight includes three items. The staff considers those items to be non-controversial, would ask that you consider them in one motion, unless there is someone present that would like an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, the items include minutes from the meeting held on April the 2nd, tax releases in the amount of $26.38, and an amendment to the city code of ordinances to reflect a wording change in the section concerning speed limits to concur with our action last month with the changing of the speed limit out here on Union Street from White Street to College.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Against? Jim Van Hickey, your own, executive director of the Burke Council on Alcoholism and Chemical Dependency. Thank you, Jim, for being with us.
It is a mouthful, isn't it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Pleasure to be here in front of you. This is a great community. I've been pleased to be a part of it for the last couple of years, serving as executive director for Burke Council. Appreciate the help and support that you've given us over the years. I'm here tonight to share some good news with you. It's already been somewhat reported, but we wanted to do it here for you, and it's twofold. One is collaboration, that is so important in nonprofit work these days, where dollars are scarce, resources are scarce, and trying to bring good organizations together to make a difference. The Flynn Christian Fellowship Home has voted to merge with Burke Council on Alcoholism and Chemical Dependency to create one more powerful vehicle to serve people in need in this community. So we're very pleased about that, and we think it'll make a big difference. I'm also here to announce that as a result of that merger, we are reformatting the program at the Flynn that we've known at the Flynn Home. It'll be called the Flynn Recovery Community. It'll be a two-phase program. The first phase will be a 90-day intensive therapeutic program. Second program would be an optional step-down program for folks who perhaps need a little more time. It's going to be a holistic, integrative type of program, drawing on the very best of, that we know in terms of treatment modalities. We think it's going to make a big difference in this community. We'll be able to treat more people, we'll be able to serve more people, we think we'll be able to help more people find successful and fruitful lives and recovery. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, to tell you that we're going to, we've been working to kind of spruce up the existing Flynn Home on West Union Street. We're going to have a little ribbon-cutting service on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. Invite you to come join us, if you would, if you can. We actually opened our program about 10 days later, on May 21st. So you'll see some activity at the house in terms of fixing things up and trying to get some things in tip-top shape for the 21st. May not be all shiny on Thursday, but better to have ribbon-cutting before we have residents in than later. Anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share this good news with you about this community, and any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer. I do, did bring a little flyer on that program. I'll pass that out, Kelly. Thank you.
Jim, I appreciate what you've done since you've been here. You came, now, you came from Chapel Hill area, right?
Well, I had family in Chapel Hill. My family lives in Tryon.
Tryon, okay, okay.
Over in Polk County now, so.
Well, I'll see you Thursday.
I go back and forth.
Yeah, I'll see you Thursday.
I look forward to it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Pastor Bud Jernigan with Moles Grove Baptist Church.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As we sit down, pastor of Moles Grove Baptist and Southern Community, also vice moderator of the Catawba River Baptist Association. We just want to come tonight and give you a word of commendation. So I'm going to just read that and leave it with you, and it's signed by 80 signatures of many of the pastors and some of the other members, leaders of our association. Dear ladies and gentlemen, we would like to take this opportunity to express our appreciation to the Morganton City Council for the undertaking of the difficult responsibilities of your office. We believe that you will certainly spend sleepless nights knowing that your decisions will not always be popular, nor can you always find solutions in these difficult times. As the pastors and leaders of the Catawba River Baptist Association, we were greeted the recent court decision that forbade our government agencies to any longer invoke the name of Jesus Christ in prayer. We just want you to know that we do support you, and as instructed by God's holy word in 1 Timothy 2:1-3, I exhort therefore that first of all supplication, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior. And note too, that as we pray, we'll be invoking the name that's above every name, that name that the Bible says every tongue will confess, the name of a Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Jernigan. Appreciate you being here. Public hearings. New business. Public hearing, I'm going to open up to consider rezoning requests submitted by Rebecca Marek Petite for .459 acre property located at 604 East Union Street from residential high to ONI office institutional selling.
This rezoning request actually pertains to one lot that is situated adjacent to the newly renovated Bridgeway Solutions property. The lot currently contains a residential structure. It's been used as a family care home and for music classes. The property does have a small gravel parking lot area behind the house that is excess from Aura Place. The city staff has recommended approval of this request, and they have reasons outlined in your information that comes from the planning and zoning meeting. In addition to that, the planning commission also recommends approval of this request can report that it was properly advertised in the News Herald on April 25th and May the 2nd, and that first-class mail notices were mailed to the properties, and the property was posted.
There you go. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against? Close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'd like to motion to certify that this rezoning request is in conformance of Morganton adopted Mission 2030 land development plan.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
If I may just insert here, I know that's been, not been your normal practice, I've recommended that council include a motion specifically certifying this because of some recent court actions that might otherwise throw some doubt on any rezoning request action.
We always find lawyers want to muddy up the water.
I'm afraid we do.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I make a motion to adopt an ordinance rezoning .459 acres located at 604 East Union Street from residential high to ONI. I have a motion, second. Any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Second public hearing is to consider amending the rezoning conditions pertaining to out-parcel signage for the Morganton Heights Shopping Center at 645 West Fleming Drive, submitted by WRS Real Estate Investment, Sally.
This is one that kind of takes you aback at first, because we don't normally get requests to lower the size or to decrease the size of allowable signage. In August of 2009, you approved a general business conditional use rezoning that was submitted by WRS Real Estate at the former Henrydon site, what we commonly refer to as the Walmart project. That was to allow for the development of the new retail center that is underway there now, and along with that, seven adjacent out-parcels. There's a lot of work going on there currently, and that is underway. Looking at the out-parcels, and there are seven, they are allowed to install freestanding signage up to 300 square feet and up to 15 feet tall, fairly substantial sign, about twice what is normally allowed in the city. The developer has requested to reduce that maximum size and reduce that down to 150 square feet and six feet in height above Fleming Drive. And you have some drawings included in your packet that show you possibly what that could look like. We'll tell you that the public hearing was advertised in the News Herald on the 25th and on May the 2nd, and you have information included in your packet regarding this request and the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting.
Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the microphone and state your name and where you reside. Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your wishes?
I'd like to motion to recommend amending the rezoning conditions for the Morganton Heights Shopping Center to reduce the size of out-parcel freestanding signage as requested.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Lee, can you give us an update on the parcel? What's going on? If you don't mind. State your name, where you reside.
Back row. The project is well underway, the grading continues. I think they're probably in the second or third phase of grading now, so Mr. Steve Miller is here with WRS, and he can certainly give you probably a better update of exactly where they are in the timing of the project better than I could. So Steve, you want to add, state a few?
You can come to this one, if you would, and state your name.
I'm Steve Miller, project manager for WRS. I reside at 3003 Burning Bush Road in Ringgold, Georgia. I also have a secondary residence here in Morganton at 305 East Union Street. Yes, we're in phase three of the project. That is the construction of the Walmart pad that's currently going on. Everything is moving according to schedule. We are also, as everybody probably has seen off the road, have the off-site DOT improvements underway, which will be the entrance drives into the project. Weather's been cooperating, contractor's been performing well, and we're all very pleased with progress to date and more than willing to answer any questions.
When you foresee turning the pad over to Walmart?
Well, we anticipate having the pad built in fall of this year. August is the contractor's responsibility, but because of the amount of fill that is on that pad, we need to give it time and monitor it to settle. So we will formally be turning that over in the beginning of 2013, January, to Walmart.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Before we go on, on the first motion, were there two motions? I mean, you did both of those, you know, the informers and then the actual?
Yes.
You did both of them? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Let me open up a public hearing to consider the city of Morganton Community Development Block Grant CBDG Entitlement Program Action Plan 1213, year's 1213. Public hearing is open. Sally?
Well, we have Lisa here to talk about that tonight, and I'm sure you'd rather hear her than me.
We would.
I know. I know my place.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening. This is the 2012-2013 Community Development Block Grant for the city of Morganton, your entitlement program. Got a little bit of a raise this year. We're going to be getting $158,108, and we have three different project areas that we're going to be spending that in. Small business loans, we have $104,408. Grants to nonprofits, $23,700, and administration, $30,000. This is a required public hearing for any comments or public input.
Close the public hearing. Your wishes, counsel? I make a motion to approve the city Morganton Community Development Block Grant CBDG Entitlement Program Action Plan 2012 and 2013.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Have a safe trip, Hickory. Other business, consideration of administrative, administration contract with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and project budget ordinance for 2012 CBDG.
These are the other two actions that you're required to take now that you've held your public hearing and you have adopted the CBDG program. We need to do two things. We need to approve a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments so that Lisa can continue administering this for us, and then we need to approve the actual project budget ordinance, which sets up the categories, just like what she presented, the $158,000 in revenue, and then the three different programs. The small business loan program, the grants to nonprofits, and the administration piece of that.
Okay. Counselor members, what are your wishes?
Need to approve the contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government for grant management assistance with the Morganton CBDG grant entitlement program.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Need to approve the 2012 project budget ordinance.
Okay. We had a second over here. Any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of an award of a contract for 2012 banking services, Sally.
Earlier, a few weeks ago, Karen entered, sent out RFPs requesting proposals from local banks to provide our banking services. This is something that historically we have done for ever, I think. We do, there is no requirement that we bid banking services, however, we've always taken the stance that we like to give opportunities to all of our local banks to have the opportunity to serve the city. And so we issued the RFPs, received four responses. You have seen the breakdown of those responses. Would recommend to you that we award the city's primary banking services contract to First Citizens. That will be a banking change for our primary banking services. That would begin July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2017. Would recommend that you award our merchant services, our credit card services, and award those to remain with BB&amp;T. Would also recommend that you reject all bids that we receive for the custodial services and make a motion that we would remain with Wells Fargo under the same deal that we have for that service currently. So we will have three banking relationships. Primary banking with First Citizens, credit card merchant service banking with BB&amp;T, and safekeeping custodial services for our investments with Wells Fargo.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. All right, counsel?
I'd like to motion to award primary banking services contract to First Citizens Bank, motion to award contract for merchant services to BB&amp;T, and motion to award custodial services to Wells Fargo.
That's okay.
May I note that we need to state, though, the period, the term, especially on that first one, it's a five-year contract.
So that's through July, July 1st of '12 through June 30th of 2017. Is that agreeable to you, Alfred?
Probably, I mean, in the motion, they include that.
Yes.
Yes. You are. Okay. We have a, we have a motion. We have the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of Catawba River Water Pollution Control Facility Regulator Compliance Improvements Project, North Carolina Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Sally?
It seems like we're going to talk about this every month, doesn't it? And we may talk about this every month between now and 2014 September, when it's supposed to be done. This is the continuation of the waste treatment plant improvements that are relative to us complying with our special order by consent that we have entered into with Deener. The good news is, the Local Government Commission on April the 3rd approved the state revolving loan, and they approved that in the amount of $11,428,456 at 2% interest for a 20-year term, which is a fairly favorable loan offer. The 11.4 will cover the construction, contingency, administrative costs to Western Piedmont Council of Governments in the amount of $40,000 to help us administer the process with the state revolving loan fund, and also pay us back for some previously paid engineering cost that we have had on the project thus far. The fee to close the loan is $228,569. That is calculated based on the amount of the loan and comes directly from Deener. It is payable to them within 30 days of the loan offer. We received an updated loan offer today in the mail, so that is instead of the April 19th date, April 24th. And certainly feel like it is an opportunity for us to get to take advantage of the state revolving loan fund, something that we have not been able to do or haven't done in the past, and this is a good project to get to do that on. The other thing you'll need to do is, if you want to move forward, and I hope you do, because we're under a deadline to get this project done, to accept the loan offer, we have to approve the capital project budget ordinance, because this is going to last more than one fiscal year. We have to approve the budget amendment of $228,569 so we can pay the closing cost in this year, and then an approve of the administration contract with Western Piedmont Co.
You know, I'm going to make the motion, because this, our project was the number-one project out of how many projects that?
I don't know, two or three pages of them listed, and we were, we received the highest points.
Motion to accept the loan offer from North Carolina Department of Energy and Natural Resources for $11,428,456 at 2% for 20 years.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I have number two. Anybody?
I'd like to approve the capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $11,428,456 for improvement at the Catawba River Waste Water Pollution Control Facility.
Second.
We have the motion, second. Any discussion of that? Alfred, I had, almost had a problem with that same thing. I've never seen a figure like that.
It's so large. It's a large number.
All in favor say aye. Opposed?
It's a lot of money.
Yeah. Motion to approve a budget amendment of $228,569 to appropriate funds to pay closing costs on the SRF loan.
Second.
We have a second. All right. Any discussion of that? All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Make the motion to approve an administration contract with WPCOG in the amount of $40,000.
Second.
Have the motion, have a second. Any discussion of the cog doing that? All in favor say aye. Consideration of the Governor's Crime Commission Grant, 2012 Camera and Security Project, Sally.
This is very good news also. Public Safety has been awarded a grant by the North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission. The grant award is $52,425. That is federal funding. There is no local match required. This is through a very abbreviated grant cycle. These funds are available May 1st and have to be spent by December 31st of 2012. These are some dollars that the Crime Commission figured that they had that they needed to get spent. We were fortunate in that we had a project ready to go, were able to get that in. Public Safety and Captain Bradshaw got that submitted and we have been funded. That is to equip four interview rooms, a polygraph room, the breathalyzer room, and a rest de-processing room with state-of-the-art audio and visual recording equipment. And that will help us actually to meet new requirements for the quality of our video and for that being used as evidence later on. So it's a really good thing. Need to do two things. We need to accept the grant and then adopt a budget amendment saying that we're going to get the dollars.
Make the motion to accept Governor's Crime Commission Grant in the amount of $52,425.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Congratulations, guys. All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Motion to approve the budget amendment to accept funds from the Governor's Crime Commission Grant.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, consideration of appointments to Board of Adjustment, Sally.
We had two members. One is a full member and one is an alternate. Those are set to expire on June 3rd, 2012. Dave Rader is the full membership and Beth Walker is the alternate. Both of these have indicated that they are interested in being reappointed to that. These are council approvals. It's a three-year term set to expire June 3rd, 2015.
Sidney?
Motion to appoint David Barry Rader and Beth Walker to the Board of Adjustment for terms ending June 3rd, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye. All right. On the 30-day notice of vacancies, Kelly, contact tomorrow all the department heads responsible and make sure that they give them impromptu time to us, but if they don't have names to fill the vacancies, to let us know and we will try to fill them as a councilman. Okay? Those are cable television, three, community appearance, three, fireman supplemental retirement fund, one, and one public safety vacancy, human relations commission, two, main street advisory, six, planning and zoning, three, recreation advisory, three, and redevelopment commission, three. That's for next month. Anything from any of the other council members?
Yeah, I think we need to commend Public Safety for their efforts to secure this grant, $52,425, which is money that will not come out of the city coffers. It's a good project and I think you ought to be commended for your efforts in getting that done.
I'll second that.
Okay. Sally, you got anything? Meeting's adjourned.